Hello, everybody. We have a public hearing first prior to the Pledge of Allegiance and Council meeting. We have a public hearing to consider various tax amendments to the following sections of the Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Ordinance of the City of Medina, Ohio. Sections 1147-13 and 1147-16 relative to signs, Section 1155-01 relative to fences, and Section 1135-13(c) relative to building development standards. Is there anybody that wishes to speak in favor of the various tax amendments to the Planning and Zoning Code? Mr. Medall?
Yes, Mr. President. Thank you. This is kind of the last pieces of a series of tax amendments that I had taken to the Planning Commission in February of this year. These were, as I said, the Planning Commission recommended these pieces along with other pieces of amendments to the zoning code at the February 9th Planning Commission meeting, recommended for approval to the City Council. At the February 17th Finance Committee, the items in front of us tonight were held back by the Finance Committee and sent to the Special Legislation Committee for a little further review. The ones that were held back and sent over to Special Legislation Committee went to the committee on April 19th of this year, and the ones in front of you had come out of that process and then went back to Finance Committee and are now in front of the City Council this evening for a public hearing. And basically, the four sections, two sections are just to clear up, to make practice and administration consistent with code. So the changes to 1147-13 and 1147-16 just clarify process that was created during the 2014 larger tax amendment throughout the entire zoning code. Section 1155-01 provides a little more flexibility for corner lots and how and where fences can be placed within their properties. And lastly, the Section 1135-13(c) gives a little more flexibility for materials and percentage of materials on publicly visible facades within the building development standards of the C2 zoning district, which is pretty much the zoning district that encompasses the historic district plus the commercial areas in the immediate area of the downtown, in the center part of the city. So I would just recommend that the City Council passes along under the Planning Commission's recommendation and the Special Legislation Committee's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else that wishes to speak in favor of the tax amendments? Is there anybody who wishes to speak against the changes to the zoning tax amendments? Hearing none. The public meeting, hearing is closed. If you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Shields?
Here.
Simpson?
Here.
Coin?
Here.
Hilbert?
Here.
Colossar?
Here.
Lamb?
Here.
Rose?
Here.
Ringing the minutes.
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
I move that the minutes of the regular meeting of June 12th, 2017, is prepared and submitted by the clerk be approved.
Second. Discussion on the approval of the minutes. Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the minutes?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colossar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Reports of standing committees. The Finance Committee met prior to the council meeting this evening, and again will meet prior to break on our last meeting for the, before the summer break on July 10th. So I hope everybody can make that one. Health Safety and Sanitation Committee, Mr. Colossar.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a tentative date of July 25th for our next Health Safety meeting, and that will be assumed 5:30 down in the multipurpose room.
Thank you. Public Properties Committee, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report and no meeting schedule at this time.
Thank you. Special Legislation Committee, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report, and we do have some things to discuss, but we'll schedule a meeting when we come back from break.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report. We hope to schedule a meeting sometime after our summer recess.
Thank you. Water and Utilities Committee, Mr. Hilbert.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have nothing scheduled at this time, but a couple of things came up at tonight's finance, so we may try to get something scheduled here soon.
Thank you. Emerging Technologies Committee, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did have a meeting last week on the 20th. We did discuss the court software, the disaster recovery, and having to replace emergent tech.
Thank you. Request for council action. We have several for the Finance Committee, 1719, Amending Salaries and Benefits Code 3114, sick leave, 17120, increased expenditure PO number 2017, 1031 GB Hawk Construction, 17121, 2018 tax budget, 17122, fiscal year 16, private rehab 540 Ridge Drive, 17123, Amending Salaries and Benefits Code 3105, police and fire chief civil service classification, 17124, amending ordinance 14216 and 14316 regarding memorial pool construction, 17125, LPA project agreement with ODOT Guilford Boulevard Bridge, 17126, discussion for review of 2016/17 sidewalk program, and 17127, increased expenditure of your construction PO 2017, 1022. Reports of municipal officers. Mayor Hamel?
Thank you, Mr. President. The band concerts will continue each Friday. This past Friday, they had to be canceled because of the weather, and the farmer's market was also moved on Saturday to Broadway Street in front of the courthouse there. And we're fortunate that both the farmer's market and the Medina Community Band are very cooperative with the city in canceling or moving their events so they don't damage the turf that we work so hard to maintain up there. The farmer's markets will continue each Saturday morning from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00, I'm sorry, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Still many activities and visitors to our square, and we received over the weekend several positive comments of those that were here for the car show last week, both to brought cars and to view the cars, and what a great downtown we have, and they were happy to have been able to come visit it. As the council's aware, but for the public's benefit, our police chief resigned effective June 21st. On July 5th, our civil service will begin the discussion of selection of a testing contractor, the various components of the test, and how they wish to rank each of those, as well as a consideration of removal of civil service protection for the chief of police and fire chief. On July 3rd, in the evening, the fireworks will be presented by the City of Medina, Medina Township and Montville Township. All three of us contribute to those, and they will be set off at the Medina High School. And in case of rain, the rain date will be July 5th, same location. July 4th, there'll be a parade that starts at Spring Grove and Liberty and comes to the square and around the square, all except in front of the courthouse. So it goes around the other three sides. And then shortly thereafter, at 8:30 p.m., there'll be a non-Friday concert of the Medina Community Band. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durham, Director of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. The tax budget was discussed at the earlier finance meeting. That's the first component of the city's budget for 2018. As far as the state budget process works, it provides our revenue estimate. And speaking of our revenue estimate, I emailed council, so you're aware, our income tax collections have been stronger than anticipated, so our revenue estimate for that has increased.
Thank you, Mr. Huber, Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Lieutenant Brooke Beckler, Police Department?
Thank you, Mr. President. Effective today, we placed a drug drop box in the front lobby of the Police Department. This is for our residents to use for unwanted or expired medications. They simply put the unused or expired medications in a plastic bag, drop it into the secure container, similar to a postal box, and we will dispose of those medications. It's not recommended that you flush such things down the drain.
Secondly, I would like to remind all the residents and the visitors to our city that the intersection of Reagan and Court is marked a no-left turn, coming from either direction. We've received numerous complaints so far to date. We've issued 116 tickets to people for failing to obey traffic control devices, and we will continue stepped-up enforcement there until that project is completed. And finally, with all the visitors and the activities we have on the square, we'd like to just remind drivers to pay attention to pedestrians, especially at the crosswalks in the center of the square where the pedestrians do have the right of way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Marshall, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Friday, June 23rd, the City of Medina, along with the Medina Chamber of Commerce, Main Street Medina, and the Medina County Economic Development Corporation welcomed a few new businesses to the city and celebrated one business expansion, starting out with the high-voltage karting. They expanded their business by adding an outdoor half-mile track, so now when you race the karts there, you can go inside and outside. It's a pretty fun place to check out if you've never been there. Also, Floor Coverings International of Medina opened up at 620 East Smith Road in Suite W3, and then Raw Fresh Air, which is a skincare facial place, opened up at 750 East Washington Street, Suite A2, and Raw Fresh Air is to refresh. So if you get a chance, please check them out and patronize them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Medall. Planning and Community Development Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Chief Painter, Fire Chief?
Thank you, Mr. President. No report tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Rowley, Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Update on West Smith. Work is continuing. We do anticipate opening the road up to two-way traffic by July 22nd, just a couple of weeks away. North Court Street, ODOT has informed us to anticipate flipping traffic from, traffic's on, they're driving on the east side of the road now to the west side the week of July 17th. Piggybacking on what Lieutenant Brooke Beckler mentioned, Reagan Parkway is being rebuilt in three phases. This week, they're starting the second phase, which consists of the removal of concrete in the center lane on both East and West Reagan. Next week, they will replace the concrete on the center lane at East and West Reagan. During those times, during the day, we are limiting traffic to one-way eastbound between Huntington and Jefferson. We anticipate, we appreciate everyone's cooperation with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fry, the Medina Cable TV.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report at this time.
Nice to have you, though. Mr. McCollough, Service Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. The yard waste program's going well. It's actually going better. There was some learning curve, both from the resident's side as well as the sanitation side, becoming more efficient, a little confusion with respect to the day of pickup on behalf of the customers, but we're getting better. I'll have some weights as we weigh all trucks, and I'll have some numbers for you by the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Confirmation of mayor appointments. We have three of them, and if there's no objection, I'd like to do them all at the same time. Hearing no objection. We have Planning Commission Monica Russell, term expiring 1231, 2020. Planning Commission First Alternate, Andrew Dutton, term expiring 1231, 2019, and Planning Commission Second Alternate, Bob Thompson, for term expiring 1231, 2020.
Move to approve the mayor's appointments for the Planning Commission?
Second.
Any discussion on the mayor's appointments? Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the mayor's appointments?
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colossar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. Notice of communication petitions. There's non-unfinished business, there's non-introduction of visitors. Members of the public were permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during a portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the chair, and a reasonable timeline of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there's a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public are afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the chair or by a majority of the council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Yes, ma'am.
Rebecca Conley, 664 Tremaine Place.
Could you pull that microphone down?
Could you repeat your name and address? Rebecca Conley, 664 Tremaine Place. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to address council and the city representatives this evening. Open dialogue between the city and its residents is key, and I appreciate having this time tonight. With that being said, I made a public records request on Thursday, June 15th, 2017, for a copy of reports or write-ups or findings in full that the city received from Labyrinth Management Group pertaining to Osborne. The following Thursday, I had to resend and ask why my public records request was not responded to, and if the city was denying my public records request. Mr. Mendel did reply and forwarded the request to the law director. I finally received and gratefully received a response from Mr. Mendel, but I was very surprised that it stated, and I quote, "There is not a completed final report from LMG yet." I did not make a public records request for just a final report, and I feel that it's unfulfilled from June 15th of 2017. During last council's meeting, it was, the report was to be intimately, or quickly coming. I can't say it, I'm nervous, I'm sorry. Coming. So I'm very surprised that the response that I received from the city was that there was not a final report yet. So I'd like to ask if they do have the report, and if they do not, when do they plan on receiving the report from LMG, and when will it be available to the public to fulfill those public records requests?
Mr. Medall?
Yes, we do have the final report, and I was going to contact you tomorrow morning. We have it on disk, so you don't have to print it. It's a lengthy document with a lot of dependencies and a lot of backup data, but we have it copied onto discs for distribution for these types of requests.
Okay.
So I will have a copy available at the front desk of the Planning, of the Community Development Department tomorrow morning.
I appreciate that. Then I have one more comment. There are several residents that are concerned and worried that they're going to miss the opportunity to be heard because the process began last fall, and now they have summer vacations planned, and they would like you to consider that, if the Planning Commission could consider that while scheduling this special meeting. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else that wishes to address council? Hearing none. We'll move on to introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. We have ordinance 9217, or amending section 33926 of the Codified Ordinance of the City of Medina, Ohio, relative to truck routes.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergence clause has been requested. I moved to add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mr. Patton?
I'll take that.
Is that, have I got the right person? Oh, Mr. Huber. Okay, Mr. Patton, you're off the hook. Mr. Huber?
This ordinance has been necessitated in part as a result of our engineers' excessive enthusiasm with respect to tearing up streets in the entirety of the city. We have quite a list of streets that are non-truck route streets that would be available for trucks that are hauling debris and material on the many streets that are being rebuilt. Currently, our ordinance doesn't provide any ability to use any of these routes temporarily while these streets are under construction, and as a consequence, this ordinance is being offered to allow the mayor to temporarily designate certain streets that make sense as these constructions go on, where the street may be used for a short time to haul in material or haul out debris. And any designation for use as a truck route would come from the mayor, who's also the safety director, and it would be done in writing, and it would be on a temporary basis. So this ordinance affords some flexibility to deal with the problems that Pat's creating.
Thank you, Pat. I'll give you some rebuttal time if you want. I know that he's trying to attack you over there, but, okay, is there any further discussion?
Mr. President?
Yeah?
I was wondering if the engineer could comment about load limits on these particular roads and capacity, what they can handle that we will still govern, that making sure...
This in no way gives any hauler any opportunity to bring in an illegal load or an oversized load. That's a completely separate permit process. These will all be legal loads, it's just on streets that have been designated as non-truck routes.
And these streets are engineered to...
Right.
Handle those...
Anticipated. We would only recommend to the mayor streets that can handle this type of traffic.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Clerk, please call the roll on the approval of the emergency clause.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colossar?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Clerk, please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colossar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Ordnance 92-17 passes 7-0.
Ordnance 93-17, ordinance authorizing the job creation grant payment of $22,500 to Sandridge Food Corporation.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Marshall?
Thank you, Mr. President. In 2013, the Sandridge Food Corporation invested $13 million for facility improvements, including constructing a 28,000-square-foot addition for a cold warehouse at their 133 Commerce Drive facility, and creating 100 new full-time positions, and adding 3.6 million in payroll to the City of Medina by 2015. The Business Development Committee met with the company on May 24th to review their progress on this project, and noted that they have created 178 positions with payroll of 7.7 million. So they have met their job creation goal at 216.10% of their payroll goal, which qualifies them for the grant. This information has been verified with the CCA. We request that council approve the 2016 tax year job creation grant payment in the amount of $22,500. And as a reminder to council and the public that funding for these grants are generated from non-income tax-generated revenues. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion or comment on the ordinance? Clerk, please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colossar?
Yes.
Ordnance 93-17 passes 7-0.
Resolution 9417, a resolution authorizing the filing of an application for grant assistance from the Ohio Department Development Services Agency, Office of Housing and Community Development, in connection with the Small Cities Fiscal Year 17 Community Development Black Grant CDBG program.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergence clause has been requested. I moved that we added it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and resolution. Mr. Medall?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a application process for a two-year grant. Typically, in the past, allocation through state, the Ohio Development Services Agency was on a yearly basis. They've changed it into two-year basis, so there's more dollar amount within the grant application request. The allocation, there's kind of two pieces to allow for application of grant dollars. The CDBG allocation grant, as I said, is two-year. We have a couple of activities. Code enforcement, $30,000 throughout the low and moderate income areas, $22,500 to help pay for our portion of the public transit in Medina County. $82,500 for sidewalk improvements in one of the low-modern, low-moderate income census tracts, predominantly down West Lafayette from Court Street, replacement and installation of new sidewalks. Fair housing at $5,000, and then just administration at $10,000. Additionally, we're looking to apply for a critical infrastructure grant for South Broadway Street from Route 57/Lafayette Road going south to Grant Street. This would benefit also low-moderate income persons. We are requesting the emergency clause so that all of these can be applied for, particularly the allocation. Application is due July 14th. Critical infrastructure is an open-cycle program, but we'd like to get that in as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the resolution? Clerk, please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colossar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Resolution 94-17 passes 7-0.
Ordnance 9517, an ordinance authorizing the increase of the expenditure to Wingfoot Tire Systems, Inc., from $15,000 to $35,000 for the service department.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. McCollough?
Thank you, Mr. President. Wingfoot Tire Systems has provided excellent products and service to the City of Medina for many years. We buy new and recap commercial tires at state bid and actually lower prices. They were low bid and have been for the last year or so. They provide full service, which includes free delivery to the city garage once a week at no cost. Again, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption of ordinance.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colossar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordnance 95-17 passes 7-0.
Ordnance 9617, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids and award a contract to the successful bidder for the 2017 Concrete Pavement General Services program.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Patton?
Thank you. For many years, the city has had a pavement general services project or program where we bid both asphalt and concrete work for the year for miscellaneous repairs and replacements. This year, we're recommending that we split those into two different programs, and this one being the Concrete Pavement General Services. This allows us to hire a contractor to handle replacements and repairs throughout the year on miscellaneous areas. Just to let council know, we do anticipate using this contractor to do our sidewalk program for this year, as well as the installation of the sidewalk on Foundry Street.
Thank you. Any further comments? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colossar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Ordnance 96-17 passes 7-0.
Ordnance 9717, an ordinance authorizing the payment to GB Hawk Construction Co. for the private home rehabilitation at 4144 St. James Drive, Brunswick, Ohio, as part of the Fiscal Year 16 CHIP Grant Program.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergence clause has been requested. I moved to add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mr. Mandell.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a chip project at 4144 St. James Drive in Brunswick, Ohio. This is a project under our, under our administration of the grant for our partner, Brunswick, the city of Brunswick. Reason for the emergency clause is that allowing this project to begin and the builder to be, the builder to be paid as quickly as possible, that allows for the money to be reallocated into the desire to, on the contractor's side, to bid for future chip program projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion or comment? Clerk, please call the role in adoption of the emergency clause.
Colosar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Clerk, please call the role in adoption of the ordinance.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colosar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Ordinance 97-17 passes seven zero.
Ordinance 98-17, ordinance amending sections 3102B1, 3104, 3105, and 3107 of the Salaries and Benefits Code of the city of Midtown Ohio relative to the Parks Department and accepting the job description of tree care technician.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Rowley.
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance amends several sections in the Salaries and Benefits Code relative to the Parks Department. Specifically, it adds 3104I, which gives the individual employed as the tree care technician the opportunity to receive a 7% shift premium should they obtain the certification from the International Society of Arboriculture as a certified arborist. This also includes a couple minor changes to the job description that shows our interest in finding someone with those skills.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Clerk, please call the role in adoption of the ordinance.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colosar.
Yes.
Ordinance 98-17 passes seven zero.
Ordinance 99-17, ordinance amending sections 3101 of the Salaries and Benefits Code of the city of Midtown Ohio relative to the schedule of pay for positions of mayor, director of finance, and members of council.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? I guess this is me. We went through, as we normally do every so many years, to make a determination of if the pay should be changed or modified with respect to the office of the mayor, director of finance, and members of council. During our review of the current pay for the various offices, including the director of finance, we have in the previous years made a modification, usually based upon a cost of living adjustment or something close there, too. And the same with the mayor's office. What this really means is that the pay is modified so that the pay of the various offices do not get decreased from year to year, but pretty much maintain the same level of pay. As everybody knows, the cost of a dollar today is different from a cost of a dollar tomorrow. In fact, the cost of a dollar tomorrow is less than today. So what we try to do is keep pace with that, and that's what we did with respect to the mayor and the director of finance. So there was a 2% increase of the next four years in both those offices. Now, again, that pay increase only applies to the new elected director of finance and the newly elected mayor. It does not take effect to the current mayor or the current finance director. They, if they wanted to get those pay increases, of course, they'd have to run for election and win again in order to get those pay increases. That is the same that goes for the council members, for the council president and other council members. Determination has been made, and though we had a separate group make these determinations, I guess we are voting on it to do the raises, but they gave us some ideas of what we could do with the various council presidents' pay and the members of councils' pay. Again, none of which takes effect to the current council members and all of which takes effect on newly elected council members in an upcoming elections. So this is really not a pay raise for us, meaning those current members of councils, a pay raise for those who win. So if you're lucky enough to run and win again, you'll get a, a different pay than the current members of council. And the council members agreed to keep the, the pay differential between the president and council members the same, so that, that will occur. So when you look at this, even though there's pay increases that occur for the various '18, '19, '20, '21, not all members of council will get those pay increases, only those that run for office and get reelected. I think I explained that fully. Is there anybody else that wishes to comment? Mr. Lamb.
Thank you. And I respectfully disagree on, on a couple of these pay raises. Not that I don't think it's not deserved, and not that I don't think if you were to take the hours that, to look at council people in particular, if you take the hours that council people spend and you were to divide those hours into what council people are paid, I, I couldn't tell you whether it would be $1 or $2 an hour. It's, it's really not any amount of money. It's such a small amount of money. However, I philosophically disagree with the pay raise and simply because I, I view it as a stipend, and I've absolutely always been thrilled to just have the job, and, and so I respectfully disagree. However, no one that gets the pay raise, and it will pass, will be overpaid. And I think, as, as the council president explained, it's important for the community to understand that city council is not giving themselves a pay raise. City council is giving the positions a pay raise for the people that are elected next. My disagreement over the position of mayor and finance director is simply this. There is no, it's, it's not actually that I would want parity, but the way that the, the raises of both of those positions happened, the finance director's pay is higher than the pay for the mayor. And, and it, I believe that if you are putting, when you put a system together, that the, the CEO of the city, the mayor, is the highest position, and that's the position that should be the highest paid, and the finance director, of course, position would be, would be the lower pay. And they're all lumped together, so I will be voting no.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Little clerk, please call the role in adoption of the ordinance.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colosar.
Yes.
Lamb.
No.
Ordinance 99-17 passes 681.
Ordinance 117, ordinance authorizing environmental covenant conservation easement for the Champion Creek Restoration Project Grant.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergence clause has been requested. I moved to add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and ordinance. Mr. Mandell.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. These are, this is one of the last steps to completing the Champion Creek 319 grant that we've had, were, were awarded in 2013. This is, these conservation easements slash environmental covenants would help preserve the value or the, the work that was done in the creek way and in the creek bed with the dollars that were allocated through the, either provided through the state and the federal government, and then the local match to help preserve those improvements that were done in the, in the stretches of the creek. This is basically an agreement that would allow for the city to agree with a private property, one private property owner to execute this on top of their property, as well as us to submit one, submit a, or record an easement for two properties that the city owns. Specifically, the properties are the conservation easement over a portion of land that Sandra Runcinko owns behind the Busy Bee muffler on West Smith, and the city-owned properties at 406 South Broadway, which is the Champion Creek Trailhead site, and the former James Lumber site on, on East Smith Road. So the emergency clause is just to permit the timely execution of these easements and the completion of the grant as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that has any discussion on the emergency clause or the ordinance? Clerk, please call the role in adoption of emergency clause.
Colosar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Clerk, please call the role in adoption of the ordinance.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colosar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Ordinance 100-17 passes seven zero.
Ordinance 101-17, ordinance amending sections 3105 and 3107 of the Salaries and Benefits Code of the city of Midtown Ohio relative to Cable TV Department and accepting the job description of assistant producer slash technical operations director.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Frye.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just as a recap, this is a shared position for a little over 10 years now with the Medina City School District and the Performing Arts Center at Medina City School District and the city of Medina. In that 10 years, the job responsibilities have changed for this position. It's become more of a managerial role with some supervisory responsibilities as well. That's why you see the ordinance before you with the amendments to the job description and the salary and benefits at this time. And as part of the partnership, just to clarify, the city pays the benefits of this employee, and the school district covers the salary for this employee. So this not only will be going to council for approval, but also to the school board for approval as well.
Thank you. When is that process again with the school board? When would they be voting on this?
I would defer there. If Mr. Shields could offer any guidance there.
It's going to be discussed at the July work session. It could not be voted on before the July regular meeting.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion or comment on the ordinance? Clerk, please call the role in adoption of the ordinance.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colosar.
Yes.[1604.64]